Good evening. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to a republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Open up. Is anyone here for open forum? That would be no.
It's on the agenda, I guess.
What?
I was looking, but you're on the agenda, so you don't need to worry about open forum.
Okay, we'll close open forum. We'll go into our first appointment for spot auto sales. Please take the front table. Give us your name and address, and why you're here, and what you're going to do, and...
My name is Hugo. The address is twenty-six North Central Street. This is Douglas Almeida. We apply for the license transfer, the used cars dealer.
Okay. Could you give us your experience in this business?
I'm in the business almost thirty-five years.
Okay. Whereabouts were you?
About what, sorry?
Where were you located?
We are located before in Brockton, but now we are here. I purchased this building, where it is before the Batty's Auto Body.
Okay. Okay. According to the permit, you're allowed ten cars on display for sale?
Okay.
And do you happen to know, I couldn't get a copy of the site plan earlier today, do you know what the restrictions are and how many vehicles you can have totally on the property?
No. All the information I have is Patrick gave it to me, so I don't know. It's just, we're just talking about this. You just need to transfer the license.
Okay. When that motion is made, if we go to approve, then it will be to be in compliance with the site plan and any other restrictions that might be on there? Okay. Questions, Carol?
Uh, no.
Yeah, do you do anything else other than selling cars? I mean, what do you, are you, I guess, what's the operation?
The main business is body shop.
Body shop?
Yes. We already have all the license, or the government here, the city. The main business is a body shop. But we own a couple cars in the front for help, the rent, you know?
Yep, yep.
Rent, not the mortgage.
Mortgage, right.
Yeah.
So, any engine work or anything like that, or just all strictly body?
In the moment, just auto body, yes.
How many employees do you have?
Five.
Five, oh, okay. All right. Good luck.
I have to say, I drove by there a few times. I'm not a big fan of those big flags outside.
Is this, I want a question, because this is not a flag, it's a banner. Anyway, so...
I'm not a fan of the big banners outside.
But is not possible to put the banners outside, or many we can put, or...
We're gonna talk to the building inspector about that. He's not here this evening, but we're gonna talk to him and see what isn't, isn't, not allowed by the town.
Okay.
You know, it's just that, especially that location right there, just before you get into that four-way stop at the intersection there, I just, that's, to me, it's somewhat of a distraction, I'm not too sure, for safety purposes, but...
No, I understand. I understand. All the cities, the cities is different, because we almost purchased a building in Enson, and I know that the laws is different town to town, but they cannot allow there to put the banners at fifteen, fifteen feet. So, we tried to do it the same here, because we figured out, we have space enough, you know, the vision, the building. So, if it's possible, it's good, because it's good advertising for the company, you know, and we are new here.
Right. And like I said, we're gonna be talking with the building inspector, just to see what we have. You know, there's different eye laws for everything in the town, so we'll be taking a look at that. Anything else?
Nope.
Motion?
Yep. I make a motion to approve the transfer of the license as printed.
And subject?
With pending the site plan approval.
Well, no, they have the site plan and special order, but it would be contingent upon compliance with the site plan.
Compliance with the site plan things that are still to be determined, and then...
Well, no, it's not even, they, since this business already existed at that location, there's a transfer of the Class Two. They get the, they continue to get the site plan and the special permit that went with the former business, but they're gonna need to be in compliance with that site plan.
I said, I was gonna read that off tonight, but I couldn't find it upstairs.
But does that need to be in the motion then?
Yes.
Okay.
You want that in the motion.
What Charlie said. And also pending a business certificate? Is that, okay.
Do you know you have to go to the...
Clear as mud.
Office for the certificate?
Yes. A second. We're just waiting for the license.
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck. Wish you the best.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Moving on. To Honeydew Donuts. Sir?
Come on in. Hi. Hi, my name is Ahmed Duri. I'm from Whitman, and I'm requesting a transfer license from Honeydew Donuts.
What is your experience with the...
I own one in Waymouth for four years now.
Okay. Okay. I know that's been vacant for, we're close to a year now?
Yeah, almost, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Where is it? At the High Low, somewhere?
Yeah. Could you bring back the coconut jelly sticks?
Because I...
Carol?
No.
No, no, just the coconut sticks, I guess.
I like the plain jelly sticks. I don't want the coconut on there.
No one asked you.
You want that part of the motion?
Yes. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Well, there's actually a... There's a pending, so I make a motion to approve the transfer as printed pending the Board of Health Inspection and Business Certificate.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
You're all set.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you wanna do the Kruegers?
I was gonna say, I wanna do the dark market.
Yeah. Let's move to the action item.
Okay, where are we? What one is it? Number thirteen. Discuss and vote to approve the event permit for Megan Krug, is it Kruger?
Kruger.
Of Mistletoe Acres located at two ninety-six Whitman Street for the Dark Market Event on October fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, from twelve PM to seven PM.
Second.
Wanna just give us a little bit more on what you're doing that day?
Sure. So, this is going to serve as our open house. We're inviting the community to come in and look at the space, and hopefully generate more interest for our space. And we'll have some local business vendors there selling their merchandise. We charge them a very low rate to come in, because we really wanna support businesses in our community. And, yeah, it's open to the public. We're not charging admission or anything, because we really wanted the community to come in and see our new spot. And that's pretty much it. Should be a fun day. Yep. Yep. We plan to hire two detailed police officers, you know, just so we have ample assistance there. We'll have some quiet live music that day, so we have Ray Ponty playing jazz music. My uncle has a two-man blues band, so he's gonna be there doing blues for a short period of time, and then we have an acoustic singer that day, too, so it should be really great.
Sounds like a great day.
Yeah. Oh, and for food, we have Grandma Flaherty's, Great-grandma Flaherty's food truck is coming, too, so...
That's nice, and Restoration Coffee, and they're both Bridgewater businesses, so that's good.
That's a great thing.
Sounds like a fun, fun time.
Thank you. Should be great.
No, that's...
No, I'm good.
Sound good. Sounds great.
Make a motion to approve the event permit.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you. We'll see you there.
Hope it's beautiful weather for you.
Thank you, me too. I'm willing it into existence.
Manifested. Are we supposed to come in costume?
Um, you can. I'm encouraging people to.
Already?
We'll have photos with Krampus that day.
Oh, nice. Oh, okay. All right. My daughter will like that, so...
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Katie, you can probably...
Yes, right, yeah, that's right. You're on.
You're up.
Just trying to sneak in the back.
Yeah, it doesn't work. Welcome to our town clerk. He's gonna tell us all about this great election we just had.
I know, right?
Future of it.
One done, one to go.
One to go. The big one to go. Yes, we were just printing out our results. So, we just finished with the September primary, and we had a pretty small turnout, for the most part. We, it was about even between the people, it was almost exactly even. Down to even precinct one had early voters, one seventy-one, between in person and vote by mail, and then the day of was one seventy, so... And it was, when you look at the numbers, one eighty-six to one ninety-eight, two thirty to two thirteen, and one ninety-eight to one eighty, it's kind of interesting that they hover roughly the same. So, it wasn't, it wasn't the lowest turnout we've seen, but it would be nice if it was a little bit bigger, because we do, we have to do pretty much everything regardless, you know, if two people show up, or if two thousand people show up. So, everything we run is us being prepared for an onslaught of a large amount of people. I know Dave was a little interested in hearing about...
Yeah, how many, how many people requested mail-in, and how many returned them?
So, for the return rate, we were only at forty percent of what was requested. So, we only, and it was almost exactly, it was thirty-nine the day of, and the day of, we got just enough to put us at forty percent return rate. So, that was also a little disappointing, just because it costs so much money and so much time. I don't think people totally get how the process works, which I totally understand, but when you request the vote by mail, we actually in-house have to put the packet together. It's a lot of work. It takes a lot of election staff. We have about thirty, a staff of about thirty people that initially would just show up for Election Day, and we've asked them now to become, they're kind of part of my office staff, so they actually come in for all of these different events, for early voting, vote by mail, and they help us with the process. So, it's, we're asking a lot more of them than just that one day. And they've been wonderful, and they're great people, and they have done nothing but support us, so...
Does your budget cover all that?
Huh?
Does your budget cover all this now?
It's not as much as it probably should. So, yeah, it definitely increased our budget. It's essentially like running three elections in one now. So, it's...
Every time.
Every time. The state does currently reimburse us for some of the staff costs, but it's a reimbursed basis, and I'm still working with Melanie to kind of see what that looks like. So, that's helpful. I don't know, long-term, what's gonna happen. I know that personally, I'm, you have to advocate with the state to try to make sure that they continue to support us and/or put something in the budget to support this long-term, because I don't think it's gonna be going away, so... And I'm not sure what the long-term decision will be.
So, if somebody requests a mail-in, a ballot by mail, and then they decide they don't wanna vote by mail, can they then show up in person and vote?
Yes. Yep. And that's primarily what happens.
Okay.
A lot of the people that request a vote by mail do show up and vote in person, which I understand, and that's totally their right. And, and, yeah.
And then you have to make sure they didn't vote twice, essentially, because...
Yeah, well, we've already processed...
You've already processed everything you've received.
Yeah, so the one thing we started doing was advanced processing, which is another, another way of kind of making sure that there isn't a ton of confusion on Election Day. So, it actually, it just started because our tabulators are very slow. All tabulators are very slow. It's very common. They take like, you can only process, I think, thirty a minute, something insane. It was a number, and we found out when we did the math that we weren't gonna be able to process all of our early voting on Election Day, while also accepting other ballots. So, we actually do advanced processing, which means that we kind of hold a little mini-election. It's open to the public before the big election. We do it upstairs in the big conference room, and we tabulate all of the vote by mail up to a certain point and process it. So, we not having to do that on Election Day. Interestingly, it does create two totally separate books. In the night of, it adds a lot of work to...
Because you've gotta add everything.
Because we have to add both of those together. So, it's a lot. It actually has two precinct books now. So, initially, I, I think that, I thought it went in one book, and it was just easy, but no, it's two separate, completely separate processes, and they're stored separately, too, so if there was a recount...
And then now you're gonna have early voting.
We have early voting, yes.
Is that another separate thing?
Luckily...
Is that included with like the day of?
So, the early voting is actually for advanced, it's included with the advanced processing primarily. So, vote by mail and early voting, we, that's what we advance process. So, we're only stuck with a smaller amount. We do expect a turnout of roughly, we usually get for, historically, for the November election, an eighty percent turnout of voters. We have eleven thousand four hundred and sixty-odd voters, so we do expect about eight thousand, and typically, we're doing sixteen hundred. So, it's gonna be a huge, huge impact on the office.
For those people that request mail-in, do you have a guess on, what does it cost to send one of these out?
So, it is ninety-four cents for the actual physical mailing, and then the hours, that's a harder number. I can get it, but I don't have it offhand.
I guess you have to plead for people if they're, if they ask for the mail-in, please mail them in, and...
Yeah.
Just, you know, it's a cost that no one needs. I'm just wondering, in a lot of cases, that's, they need that to see the ballot, not realizing that it's online.
The ballot is online.
And stuff like that, but...
Yes, and we always try to put that information online, and I have been using Facebook a little bit more. I have to be a little careful, but I'm learning it, and so I am putting it as much information as I can out on social media.
It could just be a matter of education of people understanding, don't request a mail, you know, a ballot to be mailed to you just for the sake of like, oh, in case I don't feel like going, like, if you're gonna do that, you know, consider it a serious commitment to actually following the process through from beginning to end.
And in the beginning, there was a really big problem with the, with the postcards that went out, where it was very unclear...
Yeah, it was. I agree.
Yeah. If they were actually, this was, you had to send it back to vote. So, at least they, in this one, they've kind of cleared that up, and they said to vote by mail. It seems like such an easy thing to do, but it was, it was an oversight in the first mailing, for sure. And for dogs, I did wanna come and talk to you guys, because we are, we're probably only at about seventy percent of where we should be regarding licensing, so, or where we have been. So, I am asking if we can postpone the late fees that we usually put on. I come in, I usually ask if we can add the late fees. I'm wondering if we can postpone it to October first, just to...
Can I see that as an action item?
Yeah, number one.
Oh. Oh, yeah, look at that.
Just to try to get, allow people to come in. Our office has been very, very busy, and we've had to shut down on Thursday morning, so I know that some people have come when we weren't available. And I just wanted to give people a little extra time, if that's okay.
Yeah. How much are the late fees?
It depends. It's usually only twenty-five dollars. It's fifty if there's been more than one. And where we're at now, it would just be, it would be a lot of, a lot of people would be getting substantially late fees.
Would you like that as a motion?
Yep.
Yeah.
I make a motion to extend the date for our late dog fees to October first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're all set.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Stick around.
Don't go anywhere. Oh, yep, nope, not going anywhere.
All right, here we go. Mr. Moderator.
Sir, I'm the town council. So, I just got the finished product. I printed off the one that I sent a while ago. You got the finished product today, too, right?
Yes.
Well, it's not finished, I noticed. There's still some...
Work in progress.
There's still some numbers, so...
Working documents.
Yeah. So, going through it, I noticed a couple that might be, because all the zoning things are now just the majority changed.
Majority, right, because of the, yeah, the MBTA and the...
All zoning actually been changed now, just be majority instead of two-thirds. State changed that a couple of years ago. We can go through the, you know, just like we do, just wanted to go through them and...
Yep.
Traditionally, so, the first one is just a, it's actually an annual thing, just to make sure we contract some at... David, you wanna do that? And it's a majority. No other recommendation from anybody. The next one, we're rescinding someone, but we need a two-third. I don't think I rescind, we need to see majority when you rescind. Or do you still need two-thirds?
Yeah, I think the two-thirds, because it would, it needed the two-thirds to go, so I would do two-thirds to rescind it.
So, this is actually, this is rescinding, so we're not, they're not borrowing. This is a good thing. People gotta say they're not borrowing. I don't know if the town council wants to take it, or is the selectmen wanna take it, Select Board?
I think I did it last time. We rescinded something, so I don't mind doing it again next time.
So, you're gonna do the next two also?
Yeah.
I'm gonna actually do all of them for the rest of them.
And the third, Article three didn't involve borrowing, correct?
Correct.
So, that, the three can just be a majority, yeah.
And the fourth one is just a majority, too. And we'll ask, you know, the, you know, finance for their recommendation. This is just a majority. Peter?
Yeah.
And that's number five. Now, this is a tricky one, because I sit here, I'm the chairman of the Zone and Water Appeals. So, while I, while I certainly can be biased, because I've never voted in twenty years, I certainly can present it, but I am the chairman of the board, so I can get somebody else maybe to, maybe, she can present, you know, she can act as temporary moderator on this one article. So, you know, what that is, is, you know, we're involved in this forty-beard North Beverly Street, and it's become a second full-time job for the board. And I was involved with Wayside Farm, and that took almost a year, and this probably will take just as long.
We're just gonna cut this in half, I think.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. We're back in...
And we're gonna cut the timeframe in half.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to. And that's just a majority.
Bob, are you confirming that you need the eleven?
Well, I think you were sent a question out about how much, and I don't know if, I don't know if anybody got back to you.
No, I just sent it to you.
I'd rather have the, I'd rather be on the...
Oh, I'm sorry. I had emailed upstairs and got an estimate of hours. That's where the eleven's counted.
Okay. I'd rather be, you know, because like I said, it's, so, meetings now, we're actually, we've been running two meetings a month, just to deal one meeting with this.
Yes.
And we've moved this particular thing to the high school. Now, the crowd did thin out from the first meeting to the second meeting. I think that the department heads came, and some people came and had some decent answers. Then people might like them, but they were answers, which obviously, when you first start, you don't have. But that's a different issue. So, obviously, Article seven, we don't have a figure, we don't have a count number. That's just, somebody just needs to put that in. So, the library will present that. That's a majority. Mr. Kylie?
For seven, can we talk about that for...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
This is, we will be funding, we have the union contract with the library, and that's gonna be funded under Article one. This was an additional request by the library, for additional hours for those purposes. We do have the amount. We just need to get the account number if we wanna move ahead on that. I wanted the board to at least be aware that the article was there and not think it was part of the union article. If the board is fine with leaving it on there, that's fine, too, but I didn't want the board to be caught unawares.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Yeah, and like I said, all you need to do is just get the account number of...
Right, and Melanie can do that.
Yeah.
Article eight, Mr. Kylie will present it. It's up by in here.
And that's a...
This is a nine-tenth, because of prior year bill. So, obviously, you know, we'd like to have unanimous. Article nine, Carol?
Sure.
That's just a majority. Article ten is another nine-tenths. It's a prior year bill, so Mr. Kylie present that.
That's actually not mine.
Yeah.
Well, it says facilities director.
Oh.
Incorrect.
It's IT director.
IT.
Oh, all right.
I think the board's gonna need to present, because Ryan doesn't live by...
All right. David, back to you. All right, Chief Jenkins will present the next one. That's just a majority, even though it's taken it from, that's just a majority. This is that account that was set up a while ago, that did a town meeting.
Melanie, is that in a...
It's a stabilization.
Oh, it is stabilization, so yes. So, that's a two-thirds, yeah.
Like I said, I'm just going through them, too. We're just going through them now.
Yep.
Article twelve?
We don't have an amount still.
All right, but Peter, you'll do that?
Twelve, yeah.
Yeah. I hear some outstanding medical expenses. Article thirteen is pretty much...
Twelve majority, or?
Oh, twelve majority, yes. But I know what you're doing, just trying to get it out there so we have these in there.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, this is just for netting that storm field. I presume it's to keep foul balls from hitting people's houses.
Yes.
People.
Good luck.
And the board's gonna talk a little bit more about this when we get to the article discussion, and maybe that when we get to October seventh, that we'll just, we'll be able to pass over this.
Yeah, there's nothing, information. Carol, I'll be you if it tells. A free cash thing, that's just a, again, we just need a figure, but that's just a majority. I'll be, you know, capital planning and the Finance Committee will recommend, and that'll be David. All right, the next articles are all Planning Board articles. So, and they're all zoning related, so they're all the majority needed. So, I don't know if Kevin Riley's gonna do it, or...
Say that again? There has to be majority on that?
Yeah.
Normally, so, yeah, so normally, the zoning bylaw change usually needs a two-third.
Yeah.
They're kind of amendments to the law. Basically, this is the MBTA, basically, and some of these, you know, changes. Basically, if you're making a change to include multifamily housing by right, which is, these articles in the map are gonna allow that, and then also the, there's also for, yeah, the ADU for the accessory dwelling units.
Yep.
If that's allowed by right, or even if it's allowed by special permit, depending on the situation, which these are. So, they're just the major, a simple majority.
Okay.
Whereas in the past, it was, you know, any zoning, any other zoning bylaws, usually two-thirds, but these qualify for...
That's good. That's better news. I was originally thought it was two-thirds.
Well, zoning was, but they changed, this is the...
It was twenty-twenty-three, I think. They changed it last summer.
You know, provide housing for people somehow, you know, these overlay districts to, you know, center. Now, we don't, we don't have a train station, so, you know. It actually was meant originally for towns, and so they wanted to actually build around the stations.
Sure.
Most I fear was they can't, but then they said, well, wait a minute, we can go to the town of Buddingham, so this year, we have to have it done. Then two towns, we have to have it done next year. So, very few towns actually will get out... So very few towns actually will, will get out, get away, you know, unless you're in central Western Mass, will get, will avoid this. It's a huge change on the accessory unit, I, we were discussing in our office, that's a huge change. Not to be owner occupied.
Yep.
You could have two freestanding buildings.
Yep.
Which you could never do, used to never able to put two, two buildings on one single lot, now you can.
Right.
Under certain, you know, certain things, and then the...
Multi-use, I heard too?
What?
Multi-use as well?
Yeah, yeah, well, no, well, yeah, depending on the zone. So if you, let's say you're in our one zone, you have a big enough lot.
Yep.
You could have your house, as long as it's not over eighteen hundred square feet, typical Cape, you know, three-bedroom.
Yep.
You could put a nine-hundred-foot standalone building, if met all the zoning setbacks. Now, I think that's gonna impact more towns with town shortage, because they, they have, because there's certain restrictions you have to, you know, do meet, but it's, uh, it's coming, you know, that they're gonna be able to say... And, you know, in-laws will no longer be called in-laws, we, in this town, we call them extended living areas, but now it's, nope.
ADUs.
You don't have to be, uh, you don't have to be related.
Right.
And, you know, it's not have to be owner occupied, so you could rent your house, so, and you could, if you could fit one on. The only other thing it does also, which, which for years was a standard, was that if you own two lots in your name, they used to, for zoning purposes, combine it into one, not anymore.
Really?
You have a room I can rent for you?
I know, yeah, yeah.
Is that in-law change only for the separate buildings, or does that include...
No, that can be attached. Right, so certain, yeah, certain restrictions for each, you know.
Yeah, it can be attached or separate.
Or separate, but you have, you do have to meet, so, you do have to meet certain, uh, you have to, still you have to meet setbacks.
Yep.
But the, the last sentence of the, of the, of this statute says, "And it cannot be reasonably withheld."
And what?
The zoning, it can't be reasonably withheld, so you have to, you know, almost there on the side of, okay, we'll give it to you.
Right.
Interesting.
But again, towns, like, five receptive is kind of tough, because you have to, you know, people have to publicize the systems possibly or something, so that, that would... But if you had, if you had town shortage...
Yep.
Benefit. And that would be the end of the meeting.
Yeah. All right, so that's...
So either, I assume it's either gonna be Kevin Riley who'll wake on and they'll be presenting those.
Seventeen.
I think it would be Kevin Riley.
Yeah. I think it was nineteen articles. Yep, right now.
There may be a few showing.
So the last four articles are all majority?
Yeah, there's all that MBTA and the...
And they, are they gonna do presentations on this to, so people understand, or are they just doing hearings ahead of time?
Yeah, he's got a slideshow, yeah.
For that night?
Yep.
Too?
So obviously, they have the public hearing, which is scheduled for the sixteenth. On the MBTA zoning, they're scheduling the public hearing on the ADU an hour before town meeting on October seventh.
Oh, boy.
I assume, you know, you've said presentations on both.
Yeah.
Get everything else before you...
I know that Roy's been working a lot on the slides.
It's not gonna work.
It's gonna be interesting, I think.
No, it's gonna be a lot.
And we did have, um...
We have pizza coming in about eleven-thirty.
The, uh, the attorney general had offered to review the, the MBTA bylaws. So we did, yeah, so we did forward to them, and, you know, and, and basically, the vast majority of it, you know, looked good, um, so, um...
But the AG's office said you can't put in the sunset provision.
Right, the sunset provision, yeah, that's one that they'll probably, you know, have to amend.
It, I mean, it's up to the town, because towns are fighting these, and more towns are now fighting them, but, you know, the long one, costly, it's...
What's happening to the towns that are...
Well, the one that's actually, the only one that's gotten up to the courts is Milton, and that's kind of stagnant, but, you know, they, they held some, they held some grants back for the state.
So, yeah, so the, so one of the main things is, yeah, grants, obviously grant money, um, state, certain state grants can be withheld. You basically don't qualify any, you know, starting, you know, right away, so obviously, that's a huge one. Obviously, too, and Milton, they, you know, potentially could sue town, you know, initiate litigation. One of the, the third, uh, one of the third, and this is kind of a, a serious one, I, um, is part of their, the AG's lawsuit against Milton is basically they're asking to, basically, to appoint a receiver to take over. And if that happened, that means the receiver could say, we're gonna put it wherever we want in town, so the town would have no, really, you know, have no choice, they could say, all right, we're gonna put it right here.
Right.
I think that, that'd be a stretch for that to actually happen, you know, but I think that's, that's, you know, obviously, one of the strongest arguments of, to, to, you know, if you're, uh, uh, you know, if you live in a town, that, hey, you know, we'd rather choose, choose where we're gonna get to put these districts than let somebody else kind of take over and just, all right, we're just gonna throw it here, and...
In reality, some of the towns that have, more wealth voted it down, they voted to, but some of the times, some of the towns are a little bit more wealthier that have the funds to maybe battle it too.
So does that, uh, mask work for it?
Yeah, yeah, that definitely...
I don't know about ones that have already been awarded, I haven't heard that yet, but I've definitely heard that ones that you applied for that haven't been, you know, granted.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, I think...
Captain Natty's not on the list.
No, I think they can, certain things they can't do.
Library state aid?
No, that's not on the list.
But they, you know, the other thing is too, something, you know, the list could be amended down the line, you know, so you never, you never know, you know. You have the set list, but it certainly could change in the future.
Well, and people need to, like, understand what those consequences are, because I hear a lot of people saying, oh, we should just reject this, or some people saying, I shouldn't say a lot, but I hear people saying, well, we should just reject this, the town should just not do it, but there are pretty serious consequences.
It's up to the town to put, to not, put something on that night to find exactly how serious these consequences are.
And I think a lot, sometimes there is the misunderstanding that, I think some people think, oh, you know, that this is more like affordable housing. It's not, it has nothing to do with affordable housing.
Right.
It's, you can have the nicest, you know, most expensive condos and multi-use and whatnot, um, that, you know...
The issue was, is that the area that they're looking at is that forty B area, so you take both of those, and, you know, and all of a sudden, you've got them all, well, you've, you know, you've been at the meetings.
Right.
Right.
So it's, it's too bad that it all seemed to work at the, come together at the exact same time, you know.
I was just in Hanson, though, the other day for an appointment downstairs where Restoration Coffee is, and then upstairs are these beautiful condos, I mean...
Yeah.
You know, that's an example of what it can really, you know, can enhance a community.
But that's by the train, right?
It is, yes.
So, so you can, you can look, you can look at some of these towns that have done that, I mean, you know, Wayman's become apartment Mecca, but they have, but if you look at their South Wayman train station, they have, you know, those apartments are three thousand dollars for one bedroom, but they've built them there, and they, and they meet their quota, because they, that's, you know, there's whatever the base comprises of there within that MBTA district.
Right. No, my point was just that you can do things like that, and they can be attractive, and can be, you know, a positive thing.
Right, but it benefits if you have a, my point is, it benefits, my point is, it benefits if you have the train, though, because those people can walk...
Right.
To the train station.
That's their benefit.
Like, we, we, we don't have MBTA buses, we don't have, I'm not sure, I don't think that comes, I should call them, you know, on the, you know.
Yeah, we call them.
So we don't have that stuff, like, Hanson has the train, you know, I mean, we're, you know, we're surrounded, but every, every town surrounding us has a train station.
But that's the other thing, and the law has no relation to, like, it doesn't need to be walkable to, you know...
Right, that's, that's the thing, you think about it.
To any kind of public transportation source at all, you can put it, the towns basically have leeway to put it, you know, where they feel is the best spot.
Right. All right.
Okay.
All right. See you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just like this, no questions. No questions, I guess, it's all, it's all a war, I think.
Awesome, thank you, appreciate it. All right.
Action items.
Action items. I'm making motion to approve and close the October seventh, 2024 special town meeting warrant.
Second.
We've got to at least, say, some money or something like that, if we don't want to...
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Keep going.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the August twelfth, 2024 select board...
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve but not release the minutes of the August twelfth, 2024 select board executive session meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. A discussion of possible solutions for Old Plymouth Street regarding safety and traffic.
Um, I haven't gone very far with Bridgewater, they've not been returning phone calls at this point, and anything we're going to do, we need to be doing with them. However, I was looking, I've been taking photographs in other communities, um, they have temporary bumps in that you can screw them into the pavement, so that they can then be lifted when we deal with snow plowings. And it also allows, because it's on a temporary basis, it allows us to experiment either, for instance, where to put them, how high to put them, things like that. So, um, it's something I need to talk to John Haynes about, um, and I have no idea of the costs, I, you know, I took photographs in other communities, but I haven't found out how much it costs, but now it might be also a way of bringing these in, um, you know, as a trial, because it'd be far more expensive to put in something that's permanent. I need, I, it really needs, needs the cooperation from the town of Bridgewater, because, um, of the shit, you know, where the dividing line is up the middle of the street.
Is, is the town administrator still there, or is he...
No, Mike has left for, on Spook County, I believe.
Right.
So do they not have a town administrator?
Well, they, I'm not even worried about the town administrator, I was calling the DPW office, and I haven't gotten calls back yet.
Maybe you can get your neighbors across the street to put some, some pressure on...
The DPW.
Their representatives in Bridgewater.
Bridgewater?
Yeah.
Well, wait, we haven't heard a word back from them yet.
Yeah. What about the speed limit, uh, twenty-five, is that something that can be done?
It could be done, yeah, but again, it needs to be coordinated, because we can unilateraly do that again because of the dividing line.
Right. So, I just want, just a little suggestion, because what happened is, um, when you come on regular Plymouth, you pass Johnny Macarons, it's still pretty much like forty-five.
Yep.
So I, I don't know, maybe probably the lower that speed limit around there, so make it that corner, because they come in, come in that corner like pretty hard, you know? Yeah.
I'd have to go back out, I suspect Plymouth Street is, um, quickly settled, but it would be an enormous change. Even, you know, John would have to work out what stretch of Plymouth Street, um, and the other thing is, there would be, we would lower the speed limit as a thickly settled area, I don't, I suspect it might meet that criteria, there needs to be a certain number of houses per quarter mile.
Right.
But I can talk to John about that.
All right, excellent. All right, I'll let them know to get in contact with them.
Get the people on the Bridgewater side to put some pressure over there to...
Signs and stuff, they always work, signs. Please respond to East Bridgewater.
All right.
All right, so, when's the next time?
Twenty-third, we're meeting.
Twenty, oh, this month?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Now that it's, yeah.
We're out of summer.
Oh, oh, got it, oh, got you, so it's more close, all right, all right, perfect. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, have a good week.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, discuss and sign the agreement between the town of East Bridgewater and Teamsters Local Union Number Six Five Three Library Unit for the period July one, 2024 through June thirtieth, 2027.
Second.
Discussion, shall we?
Other than, you know, we've successfully...
Sorry, I, I didn't, I, I didn't know if I had to state for that or not.
No.
Oh, no, no.
We suc, I mean, I'm happy that we're, you know, got through this contract, it's, you know, it took a little bit of time, but we've had negotiations on other contracts that have taken far more time, so I think we're relatively successful. It's the first union contract we've had with the library staff, um, they were under their own set of library personnel bylaws before this. We've integrated a lot of that into the contract, we, you know, brought up to date for what exists in 2024, so I'm happy. I'm glad we've been able to do that, we'll have appropriation at town meeting to fund it. Go from there.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A discussion and vote on a request to receive an education incentive for a clerical union employee.
This is different than the one at town meeting.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is for a new employee at the council on aging.
Right, she has quite the background there, so, a lot of it's communications and stuff like that.
Okay.
Discussion?
Yeah, we'll need another article at the town meeting to cover this.
Okay.
Um, we have an article right now on the town meeting warrant, another clerical employing fact, um, who is, um, there's a special incentive, seniority incentive for three years in the contract, and we're going to be funding that. You need to also fund this education, so this is a new employee, so when that particular department came in with its budget for fiscal twenty-five and was approved, this employee wasn't in that position with that degree, so we need, um, when we get to...
I can double check to make sure, like, depending on what step.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, they might have enough money in there, yeah.
I would think, because that...
Yeah, and we may need to combine it into Article five.
That position's been vacant for a little bit too, so maybe...
Yes, right.
Yeah, so you can talk with Nancy tomorrow.
I can imagine they had to cover it.
But if we, if we do find we need additional money, we'll put it into Article five.
Okay.
And reword the article to cover both circumstances.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to appoint Rebecca Johnson as municipal dog hearing officer effective September ninth, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All well?
Um, I took the training and, um, just in case any, anything were to come up. And what would your duties be?
Bad dog.
No treats for you.
Usually...
Well, you forget to that level, you haven't had anything for years.
Though usually, it, it, as Troy Garen said, I was working next door, it's usually a people problem, it's not a dog.
Yeah.
Yeah. Isn't that the truth?
So can we get a human hearing in there, to a municipal human hearing? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to appoint Ryan Peralto to the council on aging, effective September ninth, 2024 to June thirtieth, 2027, for a three-year term.
Second.
Ryan, you're here.
I am.
Could you take a seat so I can brush you?
Grill you?
You need to get closer so he can naturally see you.
Of course.
Welcome, what brings you to the council on aging?
Uh, well, the opportunity had presented itself, I've been a resident here in East Bridgewater with my family for going on years, and, um, it was interesting that there was an opportunity to give back to the community. I have almost twelve years' experience working with, um, the aging population as a skilled nursing, um, nursing home administrator and an executive director with assisted livings, um, so I thought it was a great opportunity to translate, parlay a lot of that experience and knowledge into serving my community.
You did attend the meeting the other night, I understand?
Yes, I did.
Good. Okay, he comes highly recommended by the COA board, so...
And you're my neighbor.
Hi, neighbor.
Hello, neighbor.
Don't hold that against her.
Stevens Court, corner.
Oh, okay.
The house with all the flowers out front.
Beautiful.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Remember to see the clerk on your way out.
Very good.
She's right here.
She's sitting there.
I'm kidding.
Discuss and vote, discuss and vote to rescind previous projects submitted for the American Rescue Plan Act and discuss and vote approving new projects.
So what's happening, even though it's, you know, we had plenty of time to, uh, move along on ARB grants, on ARPA grants, we are running into the first of the series of deadlines in that all grants have to have contracts in place. They don't have, we don't have to have spent the money, but we can't just sort of be waving our hands and say, yeah, we're gonna get this done. What the feds have said is that we need to obligate the funds, meaning a contract of some sort, for each of the projects that we've approved previously. In some ca, I'm working, or at least trying to communicate with the recreation commission and the school department on several of their projects right now, but that is using the town's money as opposed to Plymouth County. The deadline for having a contract in place is December thirty-first, so roughly a little less than four months from now. Plymouth County, because they're working with obviously all the cities and towns, is, for their money, they've said they want a contract in place, or that they've granted an extension no later than September thirtieth, because if a community is not, not showing that they're gonna be able to have that contract in place, they wanna reallocate those funds to a community that might have another project, because they do not wanna send any money back to the federal government. Neither do we, for that matter. In, so, and when we got, when we got the money, some of it came from Plymouth County, some of it is coming straight to us. For us, it's a little bit easier. We, you know, have a little bit more leeway, but I think it's just as equally important that sooner rather than later, that all these projects have contracts in place. So that's why I've been in contact with the schools and recreation commission that, to give them a heads up that by September twenty-third, your next meeting, that for the town's projects, the ones that are gonna be funded through the town, we need either a contractor in place, or they have to show, in fact, they're going to have one very, very soon. And because we would have then another three months or so to reallocate the funds to a project that we can show that we can have a contract about. There are some possibilities that Melanie and Rebecca have talked about. We may be able to, because they're, these are town funds and can be used for any purpose, what we might do is reallocate those funds to projects the town has already approved, but not spent the money on necessarily as part of our capital plan, not for operations, because then we're, in that, we're creating a deficit for the following year. But if we've already allocated funds for a particular item, and now have funding available for it, if these other projects won't move for it, then we'll have time to do that. And to say, you know, if we need to go out to bid, we can go out to bid. If we're using state contracts, we can get a contract. We'll have a little time to do that. There is one project that we were using Plymouth County money for, which was the pavilion over at the community center. And I think it sort of fell through the cracks in the sense of, we had a presentation for that. I think, is it, of both the pavilion, is it also the trail system? Did we already?
That wasn't Plymouth County, but that
But we can, but was our, was that our money?
Yes.
Trail system, okay. Both the trail system and the pavilion, there's no design, there's no nothing. And it isn't enough to have a design. We need to have a contract with the contractor to do the work. And we're not gonna have that before December thirty-first, because in both cases, we need to have bid specs drawn up. We have to have gone out to bid, get bids and sign a contract, where that's not gonna happen. And my recommendation is the board rescind its votes on both of those two projects to free up money for other possible projects. And we can get to one of them in a couple minutes after we do that. I've talked to, not about the trail system, but I did talk to Nancy Hill at the council on aging, the council on aging director, about the pavilion, and said, look, this does not mean we would never do this. What it means is that it would go back into sort of the normal capital plan. I am still that. For fiscal twenty-six, council on aging or whoever could submit an applicant, you know, a proposal to hire an architect for a certain amount of money to draw up the specifications for pavilion. We'd have to work as to how big we want and what we want there and everything else. That would be step one. And then the following year, if the town wanted to move forward after that, would be to come back and ask for the construction money. But it would be done under the normal capital plan. So I wanted to make sure that people understood simply because we were closing the door, and ARPA funding does not mean we're closing the door on the project itself. So my, for today, those would be the two projects that I would want the board to rescind the money on.
Do we know what the amounts are?
Do we have, the pavilion?
The trails were seventy-five thousand, and I believe the pavilion, the only thing that you technically already gave, you okay, was sixty thousand?
Right, for the architect, for design.
And how much did you say the trails?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five and sixty?
Yeah.
All right.
I make a motion that we rescind the, those two projects in the amounts as stated.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And in the reverse, we know we have money available, is that we have that article at town meeting for cage netting, how a container vessel to prevent balls from leaving strong field. As we talked about, the town's money can be used for any legitimate purpose. It does not have to meet a certain criteria, like, you know, water or sewer infrastructure or health and safety issue, well, not safety, but health issues related to the pandemic or some, or helping businesses or people who might have been harmed. It can be used for anything. And we had had discussions during the last couple of months about if we, you know, the amount of money that might cost to, we were looking at the option of very, very high nets, and the fact was that the balls might still be going over those. But John Haynes and Brian, and I don't know who else, worked together
Mike Jenkins.
To, to come up with an idea of a more of a cage around the home plate area, which would restrict the flight of those balls almost immediately. Basically, balls that were gonna go out, spray out, would already, would stop at the fencing. Would not, it would require, was it forty?
I wanna say it's forty-two. I'm trying to look it up right now, but I think it's forty-two.
I think it's forty-two.
Forty-two.
And so my recommendation to the board would be, and we've not, you know, obviously we're, we're not going through the ARPA committee or anything like that at this point, but it, because ultimately, it's the board's decision to make on the use of the fund, but to use forty-two thousand of ARPA money for this project.
Yeah.
We should be able to get a contract in place. It doesn't mean that the work has to be done by December thirty-first. We just need a contract in place in order to do it.
Good.
So, so I'm confused. So we're going to town meeting and ask them for money, but we're gonna use this money?
Well, if we, if you vote tonight to say yes, we will take that article out at town meeting.
Okay.
Now, the forty-two thousand, that was just an estimate. That was not a
Right. I don't think we have a firm
We had several fencing vendors come out and measure it up and give us a quote.
Okay.
How many houses are down in that? Are we talking like five?
A handful.
Right. I mean, I think it's ridiculous, myself personally.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, balls have been flying out of there for, I don't know how many
Many years.
Yeah, right. And that's, I mean, forty-two thousand dollars for something that may or may not solve the problem, you know?
But I think it's, it was a better solution, I think, the consensus
Oh, it is. I agree with that. I mean
Putting the high netting.
Right. You wanna take the best of the two worst, sure. You know, that's, that makes sense. But, I mean, I still think, I mean, my, I think that it should go in front of the voters. If they, if they wanna, you know, spend their money on this type of a project, I mean, I think that's the way we should go. I mean, I think there's other projects that we could utilize that would encompass a lot more people in the town.
Nope, I understand what you're saying.
See, that's just my personal. And I, I've talked to Mr. Helen Anne, just like everybody else has.
Yeah.
A million times. I just
You know, the same, you know, it was the same point people brought up when we were thinking of, you know, not thinking, but at least understanding that if we did the high netting, it was gonna be costing hundreds of thousands
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent.
To do. And it was only gonna be, again, as you mentioned, Peter, really affecting only a few families and households here in East Bridgewater.
Right. Yeah, I mean, look, I mean, if, if we can, if we have it on, on the warrant for meeting and, and it gets passed there, then that's one thing. I mean, you know, let, let the voters hear what, you know
Well, and the other thing is this, that if it, there's nothing prevent, we, October seventh, we, again, as long as we have a contract signed by the end of December, the board could make the decision that if, on the seventh
Right.
Town meeting approves this under the normal appropriation, nothing prevents the board from going back and saying, fine, we'll now fund it under ARPA's, knowing that the town has supported this project. And the
Yeah.
Funds that are appropriated at town meeting will go back to the general fund or the, to stabilization or wherever we be taking the money at town meeting.
Yep. Well, that's a good point. I mean, I just feel more comfortable, myself personally, if, you know, we put it in front and they wanna, you know, the town, the fifty people, sixty people, I don't know, seventy-five that show up to this meeting, depending on what the numbers
We may get a few more with the MBTA.
Yeah, you will, for sure.
The three thousand people that we have outside.
Yeah, that's true. But I mean
That makes me uncomfortable, though. We haven't asked people to vote on any other, like, ARPA project funding. And I don't know if we make an exception for this, like, I think it's gonna be one or the other. Like, either we vote to do it for ARPA, or we ask the town to fund it. If we ask the town to fund it, and then we turn around and fund it with ARPA.
Yeah.
Like, we didn't do that with anything else. It just feels weird to do it with this one thing.
And this was, first of all, this was a request for ARPA funding, which we refused.
Yeah. And, and having said that, I'm in favor of, of doing it with the ARPA funny at, funding. It's not a, it's a lot of money, of course. Everything's a lot of money these days. It, it is a lot of money, but I would rather see us spend it on this than turn money back and not spend it at all, which is, in some ways, what we're looking at in terms of having contracts in place to get stuff done.
Right. And I don't think we're turning, we're gonna, I mean, we've
We have plans to not, you know, we talked today about other options.
Yeah. I mean, we've got Route eighteen, at the end of the day, right? We'll get a project down on Route eighteen. At the end of the day, if we need to throw more money into that project.
Well, then I'd be interested in hearing what those other options are before we make this decision, because I haven't had anything, you know, presented other than this.
Right. Well, Charlie mentioned that we could reallocate previously voted projects to use ARPA money.
Since the, the capital projects we approved back in May, we could then, the board could review those and say, fine, we're gonna fund this one out of ARPA, that one out of ARPA. This one's still gonna be the capital stabilization fund or whatever.
Thing that we talked about was the Route eighteen project, and then the only, the only reason we even talked further is just in case we don't have a contract signed for that project by
Right. Now, how about, I know that DPW's worked on some, some roads currently, and continue to do that. I mean, this would fall into that as well. I mean, you know, infrastructure work.
Can we pass this over and come back with another
Yeah.
More information for September twenty-third?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'd, I'd be more comfortable with that.
Sure. We'll pass over to
Okay.
Leave it on.
Okay. Discuss and vote to approve on a proclamation of September as International Suicide Prevention Month and September tenth as International Suicide Prevention Day.
Second.
For some people who are in this room, this is a little bit more meaningful
Yes, it is.
Than this for others.
I, I think all of us have, have seen stories and been, you know, affected by people that, you know, choose, choose suicide. And I think this month has always been dedicated to, you know, if you see something, say something, whether you know people are having any kind of mental health illness. Don't just let it go. Don't say, you know, I hope they get better. You know, bring that to someone's attention. You know, if you don't feel comfortable itself, bring it to someone's attention, because it happens around us all the time.
Yep. And if, and if I could just add, as a, as a family member of someone who took their own life by suicide, I think, and I know Charlie agrees with me, because we've talked about this, that it's so important that we talk about it, that we don't cover it up, that we don't pretend that they, that someone who did take their life this way did something else, that we're honest about, that this is a fact of our world, and we can't hide it. And the more we talk about it, the more that stigma goes away. You know, we, we say someone committed suicide, and what do we use? We use the word commit, like you committed a crime, right? But, so you say, like, they took their life by suicide, or they chose suicide. It's just, even just that simple phrasing can make it feel different.
Correct. Right. Anything else?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discuss and vote to approve the agreement between Matthew Farm and the town of East Bridgewater, assessors map thirty, parcel seven, for the period September ninth, 2024 through September eighth, 2027.
Second.
I hope I said that right.
Charlie, what's this about?
This is the, another hanging operation, if you remember right.
It's the area, yes, in front of the City of Rock Council on Aging, that area, that used to be, I don't know what you call it, HED, or I don't know what they call it.
Yeah.
HED.
HED.
So they volunteered to do that, so it's at no cost of the town.
Okay.
They're gonna be doing it.
And the value also is sufficiently low that it doesn't trigger having to go out to bid and such.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We did thirteen.
We did thirteen. Make a motion to approve the event permit from Debbie Palito of the East Bridgewater Commercial Club, located at One Nielsen Avenue, for the Chili Chowder Fest event on September twenty-eighth, 2024, from one PM to six PM, pending certificate of liability insurance verification.
We did receive the insurance.
Okay, good.
Second.
The infamous Chili Chowder Fest.
They better have insurance.
Known worldwide.
Worldwide.
Any
CNN.
Any discussion necessary?
Mm-mm.
Go ahead. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good time. Hope you have good weather. Discuss and vote to approve the event permit and waive insurance requirements from resident Stephanie Allen for a back-to-school prayer night on September ninety, twenty-ninth, 2024, at town hall steps from six PM to seven PM, rain date of October sixth, 2024.
Second.
Discussion?
And I did recommend the waiver of the insurance requirements, because this is just simply a group of parents here in East Bridgewater that wanted to get together to hold this event. You know, it's not some formal organization that's gonna have its own liability policy, so recommending waiving the insurance.
Okay.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discuss and vote to sign a proclamation for a resident that will be turning ninety years old in October.
Second.
Before my colleague says so, no, I did not go to school with him.
I thought you were older than him.
I graduated two years before him.
I thought you were his dad.
It's a great thing. Not too many people reach that these days, and
Nope.
Maybe we can have him here on, at some point.
I'll, I'll ask the other, I'll ask the other Joe Cardle about that.
Okay.
I know, I know the younger version.
Yep.
There are two. Yeah, see if we can get him in here and give him the proclamation. You know, we can talk about, you know, when we went to cafeteria together in high school. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have some additional action items?
We do.
I make a motion to appoint Delfina Rogers to the historical commission, effective September twenty, September ninth, 2024 to June thirtieth, 2027, for a three-year term.
Second.
DeeDee, what do you have to say about this?
Dale talked you into this? Strong-armed you?
They do to you.
Under the pergola one night?
Very interested in, in East Bridgewater and the historical president.
Yeah, you showed so much of that during the bicentennial year, that I was surprised you weren't on this commission before.
Yep.
So welcome. Just put on another hat. You're gonna be running out shortly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with great enthusiasm. Discuss and vote to approve the event permit and waive insurance requirements from Zach Machansky of EBLAX, requesting the use of the town hall front lawn and parking lot for a fundraiser mum sale on Saturday, September fourteenth, from ten AM to four PM.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck with the, it's supposed to be good weather this weekend.
And I need mums. Approved signage request from Danielle Venu of East Bridgewater Business Association for the use of the electronic sign and to put lawn signs and a three-by-six-foot banner on municipal property and schools from September first through September twenty-third, 2024, to advertise the EBBA Expo and Family Day event.
Second.
Discussion?
The school
And the electronic sign is pending availability from the DPW.
And the school is okay with the request?
Yep. Okay.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Another great event.
Yes.
And I believe that's all for action items, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Just on the residences at Meadowbrook, I know there's a site visit later this month, but the next formal part of the public hearing process is on October ninth in October, obviously. We had a request through, via the ZBA, that the applicant has asked for, I think, me specifically, to speak about the financial impacts, but I think he wants the positive financial impacts about the project. And I wanted, I'm comfortable going if the board And I wanted, I'm comfortable going if the board is comfortable with me being there. I'm happy to do that. Obviously, we had, wasn't available at the hearing back last month for obvious reasons. But, and we had a number of the department heads spoke concerning various aspects of the project there. I'm happy to go the ninth. I just wanted to have that cleared by the board, because if the board felt otherwise, I wanted to know that.
I figured, fine.
Great, okay.
Charlie, you going to go with them?
Yeah, we had talked about it, but I'm, I'm...
Peaceful Meadows property update, I, we did get the deed and the survey were, the survey plan was done. I believe it's sitting in our office someplace right now. If the board would vote tonight to agree to sign the necessary paperwork for transfer of that parcel over to the town. There's no cost to the town. The survey was done by the current owner. Chris has already reviewed both the deed and the map, so we're all good to go.
Okay. I make a motion that we sign the transfer of the Peaceful Meadows property.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I believe that, yes. Brian did a lot of work in getting bid specifications put together and got three quotes, so, and basically, if the board's ready to go, we're ready to go, yes?
Yes.
But the board would, and what's, what firm are we using?
ID Signs. The only thing I would like to add to that rendition that they produced is maybe a rounded cap on the top of the granite post.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Right. Motion?
I make a motion that we approve the specs for the Town Hall electronic sign.
And that the contract for said sign be awarded to ID Sign? Brian?
Yep.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Further?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's all I have at this point. If I need to provide any, pardon? Oh, sorry.
She's got something.
Yeah. I don't want the board to vote on it tonight, because this just came in today, and I know, you know, the forty-eight hours rule, but I would prefer, given that it's dealing with the town's finances, that it's the board. So, let me go back to the beginning. We have the senior tax write-off program. So, for instance, the greeters that will host, we have here at Town Hall, but we have seniors in the community that work on a number, technically, they're volunteers in a sense, but they're doing this type of work in order to receive an abatement on their property taxes. So, they work a certain number of hours, and they get, right now, eleven hundred dollars off their property tax. We, according to Nancy Hill, we have forty-two slots, in essence, that people can fill. And she said it's one of the larger programs in the area. What she would like to do is raise that amount from eleven hundred to thirteen hundred. Thirteen hundred would still be actually a little bit less than many of the other communities, but it would, in the number of hours, someone would have to volunteer, although technically, with IRS, they're being paid. But they'd have to still work a hundred hours during that tax year in order to get the full abatement. Going over the information with Division of Local Services, it doesn't require going back to town meeting, it doesn't require approval by the Board of Assessors. However, I've made sure that Paula is in the loop about this and about the proposed change, because an increase in the individual abatements means an increase of the amount of money that needs to be set aside in the overlay reserve for exemptions to payments. Given two hundred dollars times forty-two, we'd have to increase the overlay by eighty-four hundred dollars if the board was going to do this. Again, because this came in on Monday today, I didn't want the board to make a decision about today. If the board could make a decision out of a special meeting, like, for five minutes at some point before the September eighteenth, because Nancy would like to get this published in the newsletter for the council nation in October. So, we'll work with you about meeting date and time, get that accomplished for her.
Yeah, it was really quick of going back to the ARPA, because Tim might be, I forgot to say this, when we were talking about potential ARPA projects, Tim has put in her grant for two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars of equipment. What's that?
Need some help with that, Chief?
Want me to hold it up here?
What about the hatties?
In that general area, two-hundred-and-twenty grand.
Yeah, between two-twenty-five, two-thirty-five, something like that.
So, depending, and he should know by the end of this month, the status of whether the federal grant is awarded or not, but that would be a potential project that could fall under the Plymouth County money most likely. So, just some of the options that we've been talking about with these projects that we don't think are happening and depending on the date of the sewer agreement.
And what's that for, Chief?
Just replace the three-kidneyck monitor defibrillators for the, for the ambulances.
Okay.
And that's, you know, they're obviously very sophisticated devices that measure all sorts of body functions and such. It's not, you know... It's just not cardiac, it's respiratory, blood pressure, pulse, defibrillation, pacing, whatever you name it. So, I think, what is it, seventy-five per? If there, this quote is old, it's from last March, because I had to do it for the grant, but with a, with a three percent increase, the total would be like two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand. They were sixty-five thousand dollars apiece, plus just under nine thousand dollars apiece for a four-year maintenance agreement, then instead of the town having to pay for the re-budget every other, it's a four-year deal.
Okay.
I did, where, I think this, we had someone come in a little bit late for open forum, because open forum started at six o'clock. But if, with the board's permission, if you wanted to come up, you just write one note.
My apologies, I didn't know that. Thank you.
My name is Tom Benby, and I'm here to solicit some help and endorsement from not only the Board of Selectmen, but the townspeople of East Bridgewater to help fix what I think is a grievous omission. Back on September thirtieth, nineteen sixty-six, there was a disturbance at the Castle Loma Lounge, and the police were called. Patrolman Albert Sikosha was one of the officers who responded to the request, and during breaking up the altercation, someone grabbed his baton and beat the heck out of him, where he stumbled out into the parking lot and died. He left a forty-five-year-old widow and three children, aged three to twelve. He's on the Line of Duty End of Watch Memorial in Boston and in Washington DC, but nothing in East Bridgewater, save for a small brass plaque in the lobby of the Police Department. And I'd like to, to correct that. I don't know why it wasn't done before. It's fifty-eight years. Albert was a fifteen-year member of the force. He founded East Bridgewater Little League. He brought youth football to town. He was very active in the commercial club, and there's been no memorial. So, I, I asked the commercial club for an endorsement, and they're a hundred percent behind it. I corresponded with Deputy McLaughlin and Chief Jenkins. I have an email from Chief Jenkins, they're all behind it. Everyone is behind it. And, and most people didn't even know East Bridgewater had a line of duty death. So, we'd like to come up with a memorial. I do have a small committee that's started, and the location, the type and everything will be the, the committee and the input of the Police Department and what exactly it's going to be. And our hope is to raise about ten thousand dollars to get this all finished. Now, I grew up in the town of Holbrook, and I was a Veterans Agent in Holbrook, and I came up with a, I wanted to do a fundraiser to honor the twenty-three men in Holbrook who died while in the military. And every town does a great job honoring the people who die in the military, but to me, you know, a line of duty death is not much different than a military, serving in a military death. So, when I presented this to the, the people of Holbrook, they, I had lots of sorts of businesses ready to step in and fund it, but I wanted the people of Holbrook to take ownership of this. So, I asked everybody to donate just a dollar. Just a dollar. Is it a teachable moment for your children to donate a dollar of the allowance or their savings or tooth fairy money and take part in it? We get more than enough than we needed by doing that. So, I'd like to reach out to everybody. I don't want any money from the Select Board. I want the people of East Bridgewater to step up and, and get a memorial for Albert in town by donating a dollar, or more, more would be great, but even a dollar. And I, I think we could reach that goal. I'm going to reach out to a lot of businesses and other organizations as well, but I think it's a very reachable goal. The Fallen Officer Memorial Day is May seven, May fifteenth. It's going to be a Thursday this year, and that is the date we're hoping to put something together. So, hopefully, we'll have a ceremony and a dedication, you know, for the Sikosha family. I've been in touch with his son. They, family moved to Florida shortly after his death. And I guess, he was kind of perplexed with, we don't have anything in East Bridgewater either. I don't know many towns that have a line of duty death and are honoring them, but I really think it's an oversight in East Bridgewater. I think it's time it's been corrected.
I think it's a great idea. I was totally unaware of it.
Yeah. And mostly, when I went to the commercial club, there was only one person who was even aware, about thirty people, which is even more of a shame that the people of East Bridgewater don't realize they had an officer line of duty death.
Right.
Yeah, you know, I like your, your point about, you know, learning experience as well. You know, certainly here to help in any way we can, even to the fact that, you know, if you want the schools involved, so that the kids learn a little bit more about this too, I think we've, we might know one or two people over there, and we can, we can help you out with that as well.
Yeah. Again, in, in Holbrook, I had overwhelming response to, to put something together, and I'm sure East Bridgewater will step up as, as well. We do have an account set up at the East Bridgewater Savings Bank already, and, you know, I'll post on social media, but I don't want it to be a surprise to Select Board and the town manager. You know, it's kind of just happened in the last week that we, we decided this is something that needs to be done. So, now that you know, we're on it. And, you know, we'll start with the fundraising, and hopefully, I'll be at the Business Expo and the famous Chili Chowder Fest and, you know, everywhere around town.
If you get a buck from everyone at the Chowder Fest, that should be enough.
Yeah, right?
Well, you know, like I said, I think people are ready to step up and fund it right then, that, you know, some of the people I talked to, but I really want the people of the town to, you know, take some ownership. And again, my project at Holbrook, years later, people are still saying, I donated to that. I hope make that happen. And, you know, a sense of pride in, in the community.
And I would encourage you to maybe reach out to the Kiwanis Club. I can give you a mention on that.
Oh, yeah, okay. Kiwanis Legion, you know, I'm going to go over. I'm retired with nothing else to do.
Come on, Tom.
You could come be a guest speaker.
All right, I'm retired.
Solicited donation.
All right, and I'd like to leave you with, you know, some information. This is from his memorial in Boston. I have a correspondent, Chief Jenkins.
Yeah. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you again. All right. More discussions?
Yeah, the only thing I have is, so, we thought we were done with our easements, and then we found out that the town's property isn't owned by the, well, we have to prove how we got ownership of the thirty-plus acres over in Route Eighteen. So, we've got some people working on that. It's put things at a little bit of a stop. I know there's been, Paula gave a couple names.
Right, and I've been reaching out and getting some responses, and we haven't gotten any farther, but, you know.
Okay, yeah, so, we're, we're hoping to get somebody that can help with the title information and reach out. Some of the stuff that they've already looked at, you know, dates back to, what, nineteen thirties and even further back. You do, yeah, so, you get a call, David, he might, might have been on that stage wagon.
I might have that in my file cabinet.
Actually, he came through there. So, we're hoping to get, get over this, because this is the last piece that we need